Title 10, three and ordinance of the city of New Brunswick appropriating contribution funds providing for affordable rehabilitation program. Resolution one, approve agenda amendments to approve payroll, three authorizing plan for redeem tax sales certificates. Four, approve amendment of resolution RDARs 112147 with Mark McDonald. Five, approve award contract with SHI. Six, approve award contract with Seventy Two Hour LLC. Seven, approve award contract with sanitation equipment. Eight through ten are used to city property. Eleven, authorize application acceptance of execution of grant. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are budget insertions. Fifteen, approve authorization to rebid for emergency housing shelters. Sixteen, approve amendment of resolution RDAR 072232 with Chris Anderson Roofing. Seventeen, approve amendment of resolution RDAR 062250 with George Daffer. Eighteen, approve reappointment of council. Nineteen, authorize tax collector returns for overpayments on settled tax and utility accounts. Twenty two, twenty three are refunds for various tax and utility accounts. Twenty four, approve amendment of resolution RDAR 072142 with specific instruction. Twenty five, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure for Kenville Crane. Twenty six, release of site performance guarantee. Twenty seven, release of site performance bond. Twenty eight, twenty nine, and thirty are resolutions to apply to the UEZ for assistance funds. And thirty one is an amendment to resolution RDAR 092260 with Sal E. Lecter. Then we have items for discussion by council, public comment. The next meeting will be Wednesday, October nineteenth at five thirty P. M. The meeting will now come to order. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Here.
Council President Socorro Ludwig?
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been compliant and satisfied. Now, the annual notice would be sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back house of Bueller City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Please stand for the plate of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public voting stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing in a moment of prayer for all those who suffered devastating losses and damages in the wake of Hurricane Ian. Thank you.
Should the motion be accepted, the minutes are already set in peace.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes. Madam President, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. I have a few comments to make this evening. I'll begin with the, as per the financial disclosure in question for Mr. Goldberg, he was not a commissioner of the JIF for calendar year 2022. And as well as the JIF, he and the JIF leadership were under the impression a disclosure was not necessary, nor did either receive notice to the contrary. Since the issue was brought to the attention of both, the financial disclosure was filed and the fine will be appealed. Next, there are, I have three other issues I want to talk about. Two of them, to me, boil down to contract law, and the third boils down to jurisdiction. And I'm going to address them as such. With the JIF, I want to explain this as simple as possible. The assessment adopted through the resolution by the commissioners of the JIF is an assessment on past claims as they relate to IMBR costs. They are not administrative fees. They are legally owed under the New Jersey banking and insurance law. All members of the JIF during the assessment period in question are obligated to pay their portion, which was ascertained by two independent parties, regardless of their current membership status. In order for the continued operation of the fund and service to the members, the reserve must be whole for claims moving forward. In essence, the budget of any member was not affected during the time period but for the fact that costs were not incurred against the budget during those years. The resolution allows entities to pay these costs over time alleviating undue stress on current budgets. The commissioners of the JIF are reviewing operations and protocol to ensure future operations meet widely accepted insurance practices. So just to reiterate, you know, the council understands that these are legally owed fees under the New Jersey banking law. And any other questions that you have regarding the JIF or the operation need to be addressed with them. Second, with the housing authority question, I again believe this is a contract law issue because the question related to the employment of a staff and whether there was a breach of contract in the terms of his employment. As such, those questions need to be addressed with the housing authority. They are separate entity from the city. And lastly, one issue I think relates around jurisdiction and also includes a matter of expertise. There was a special interest group that brought forth a proposed resolution to oppose a project in another town. No one, to my knowledge, on this council that sits here is qualified to substantiate the claims put forth in that proposal. Plus, the governing body of the entity to which the project lies has jurisdiction over such, after which it is scrutinized by layers of county and state agencies who have the authority and expertise to act in accordance with the law. These are the same agencies that we ourselves, the city of New Brunswick, rely on for compliance when issues, you know, when it's warranted within the boundary lines of the city. And that is the reasoning for that on the resolution. And now we'll move, do we have nothing on second reading? So we'll move to first reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39 Parkings Zones for Handicap Persons, Add 78 to Ave., 15 Sixth Ave., 19 Oak Street.
Move the ordinance setting down October nineteenth, 2022, at five thirty, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10.12.100, Schedule 11, Bus Stops Add Along New Street, North Ground on the East Early Side.
Move the ordinance setting down October nineteenth, 2022, at five thirty, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes. Three, an ordinance of the city of New Brunswick appropriating $2 million in regional contribution funds received from the townships of Biscataway and North Brunswick in order to provide funding for the homeowner affordable rehabilitation program.
Move the ordinance setting down October nineteenth, 2022, at five thirty, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes. Next, we have Resolutions 1 through 31. I'm going to open it up to the public. At this time, you have one time of the cabinet's only when you address the council. Please get your name and address.
Good evening, Council President Charlie Cradaville. If you're in New Brunswick in the Second Ward, I'd like to ask first about Resolution seven. I know there's been a lot of talk about the Department of Public Works and the vehicles and the working conditions there. It's not clear on what kind of garbage truck this is. Can you tell us make and model and if it has the amenities like air conditioning to the cab?
Certainly, Mr. Lunt, if you can, Dr.
Yes, specifically, the amenities, Mr. Cradaville, referred to all come standard new vehicles. This is the third vehicle that we've had on order. Two were expected, one shortly, the other is probably about a month and a half away. This is, again, was approved in the budgetary process of this year, but has all the general amenities, Mr. Cradaville. I don't know how specific, Mark, make and model, but full-size garbage truck with all the amenities.
Thank you, Mr. Lunt.
Okay. And can you give me any insights into how many older models you have? You said there's three, three new ones that you're ordering. How many are the old style without air conditioning?
I don't have that information. Do you know what the topic is, Mr. Lunt? I think at the last meeting I did the order, so I don't have my number.
I don't have the numbers of some of them. We're in the process of replacing them. Previous vehicles all had air conditioning. For some cases, they were not working. Cars were backlit, but the, currently, there are two vehicles that are not at all. They're probably off the road. I believe we have a total of seven, and our intention is to replace ones that are currently in service soon as a new one's coming.
Thank you.
Whatever. The city numbers to have five garbage trucks on the road in a given week to meet drought needs. Of those five, four have air conditioning or are retrofitted with air conditioning. The fifth is, is out of, it's so, it's old, it cannot be retrofitted. The two new trucks coming in this year from, that we ordered probably-
A year ago.
A year, if not more, with COVID.
More, yes.
Those, those two trucks will begin to replace trucks in a fleet in operation so that all trucks in operation will have air conditioning. There are other trucks that we keep in reserve as needed, but those, those trucks, you know, we pull them out for special tasks or as needed. I will say, it's been a long time coming, and I look forward to the day when folks who do the work of picking up our garbage can at least have air conditioning in their vehicle. Moving on to number fifteen, I'd like to know why the emergency housing shelter, you know, contract or purchase is being rebid? Is there no-
There were no bids.
No responsive bids?
Correct.
And what is this for? Is this for when, you know, a property is deemed unsafe and you need a place to put people because their normal housing is unavailable? Or is this some other?
No, that-
That's what it is, okay. Thank you. Move on to number eighteen. Mr. Jost being the special conflict counsel for the Board of Ethics. Does the Board of Ethics have a regular counsel? If so, who is it?
Oh, that, this would be the regular counsel for the board.
Okay. And why does it say special conflict counsel? I piece the right-
Well, that, under our order, it says what we call the terms that we put in place with respect to special boards and commissions who require counsel. So it's just a term of order. It's not, it's not a special, exactly, special title. This, this appointment will be Mr. Jost's earlier position.
Okay. And will he be required to file a financial disclosure statement?
He will be.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to twenty three, is a refund to Rockoff Urban Renewal. I'm a little confused about this. They're getting a refund on their property taxes, but they were exempt.
Yeah, I believe they paid when they didn't have to, but Mr. Mulroney, if you play that, yeah, I would answer that.
Yeah, there was just, there was a glitch in the system that brought them back onto the tax rules erroneously, and they're issued an estimated bill that shouldn't have been issued. They paid it, and now we're refunding it back to them.
Thank you.
Okay. And that's still the name of the tax-exempt entity owning, owning the property? It didn't change names when it changed hands? Because I know it's been sold.
I'm not sure if it changed yet, but I'm assuming these were, this was recorded as in place at the time of the transaction. I'm not sure of the timing before we went over the last, you know, the last meeting of, of the traffic.
Yeah. The reason I ask is because I know when there is a transfer of a property that has a long-term tax exemption, you, the council, have to approve it. So was that done in this case? Did Rockoff Hall, or whatever they call it now, SOCAM, did the new owners come to you and ask for a transfer?
I believe we covered that in the resolutions of the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Did you go over the transfers?
I don't recall, but the-
We, we don't have to reauthorize the tax exemption. We've authorized the transfer for entities for the tax exemption.
Okay. I did hear my time's up, but if I could get an explanation of the UEZ 202930, I'd appreciate just some insight into, you know, what prompted this and what it's going to do.
Well, I think I do know the UEZ programming almost went bonk during the Christie administration, and now they're getting their, you know, getting, becoming operational again. This is to allow us to apply for funding through that program.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, Somerset Street. First thing I would like to say, just to show you the evidence from the last week when the situation was-
Is this pertaining to a resolution? It's more about, you can do the public comment.
All right, I will do it for the public comment to prove to you.
Please allow the resolution.
Okay. That's where I will start off with, let me see, that's with the police department with five. What, what type of, what, what is this for?
This is software for storage.
Well, honestly, I think in looking through the software, the main points that I would be talking about with so many lists of things, I think this, which I've been mentioning, I think for the police department, for, for a lot of services, I think you ought to really think about the safety of New Brunswick due to where it is taking too long to respond to calls. It should not take no 25 minutes to 30 minutes for a police car or ambulance to respond to a scene.
This is pertaining, this is paying to software.
Well, with all this software that you're paying for, please start putting money into, like I said, getting 911, 745, 5200 back to New Brunswick Police Department. Due to where, what, the mayor said he could not, could not be afford, also the transfer? Come on, all this money you keep putting into the police department, but wow. And I will say, no disrespect to you, but wow. If it takes 25 minutes to come here, imagine how long it's going to take to Rockford Village. So I really think you ought, you, all of you, even the mayor ought to take me seriously due to where it's, the evidence is there of how long it's taking and no way to take that long.
Is that going to be obtained into the resolutions as well?
Well, like I said, enough with buying equipment. Think about the right equipment for the residents. Then, then due to where, eleven, due to where it's good to see that New Brunswick where I have, what, after I, I put it on Facebook, due to where, wow, great job with North Brunswick, how they make sure their neighborhood is safe, safe, safe with all the comments. It's good to see, and I hope that New Brunswick will really do it. Start pulling over drunk-
This is a grant that we've been doing for years. This isn't something new based on comment on social media.
Oh, oh, I, I didn't say this was, I said, due to where, like I said, a grant or whatever, but my point is, let's see New Brunswick get out there and do it. And due to where, not just saying on the road, on, on foot as well, due to where, like I said, you're really going to have issues with all these bars over on Front Street due to where, what, touching people? Like I said, come on. So like, New Brunswick Police Department needs to get out there on foot as well, just like you arrested a man on the corner of Remsen and Seamen where he was drunk for showing his stuff. But wow, you want to arrest, uh, uh, no one on this side due to where for touching, due to where another-
Do you have any comments on the resolutions?
This is with the resolution. Like I said, it's about so sober drinking, and like I said, please, yes, I hope to see New Brunswick Police Department get out there and do something, especially due to where, like I said, get it under control before you do build that school on Front Street. Wow, maybe you walk over there, how good you look, and then one grab you on your rear end, see how you would feel again. Six bars out of all this action? Come on, but wow, when something happens, what, in certain areas, ooh, hurry up, get the police over there. But never over there? What, drinking in public, no tickets for them? Why? Believe me, we all know why. And like I said, it's very sad due to where, like I said, New Brunswick Police Department is not helping with a lot of things.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Kush Fonsel. I'm a junior here at Rutgers University of New Brunswick studying criminal justice. Really quick, before I add my question about the resolution, I have a question about the third ordinance, if that was okay?
No, it's not. We don't discuss the-
This one? Okay.
This is our resolutions only.
Okay, no problem. Yeah. My question about the resolution number eight, is this a Rutgers organized event? And if so, what charity? Is this alt spending?
No, this is a Rutgers organized event. Mr. Lunt, do you know what charity they're giving funds to or?
I don't know. I could look and get back to the John if you like.
Thank you.
Sure. And then how was this exactly requested? Like, did they reach out to someone on this board or?
There's a process for filing. You have to fill out an application, go through the process, obtain the insurance, and ensure everything's in order. Then it comes before the council for approval.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Hello, I'm Zebulon. I'm also a junior at Rutgers Economics and Political Science major. Just wanted to ask about resolution number four. Will that involve shutting down the street? And if so, for how long? Will it shut down the street for the project?
This is part of an ongoing project. We're doing a lot of upgrades on a lot of the water mains and infrastructures throughout the city. And I would imagine that certain parts of this are going to require for the streets to be closed down at different junctures in the project. But I don't have anything specific, and there's nothing on, I don't believe there's anything on the resolutions tonight that address the dates of those closures.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other members who wish to speak on the resolutions only? Seeing none?
Move the resolution. Second.
Councilmember Egan? Councilmember Anderson?
I'm, I'm sorry. Do you wish to speak on a resolution?
Yeah, I wish to speak, but I don't believe it's on the resolution.
Then you can come up during the public comment session, sir. Thank you. Seeing none.
Again, move the resolution. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Any members of the council wish to address the public?
I just want to congratulate the New Brunswick to Mezzi Vines Awareness Commission for their annual March rally, which was March because it was raining, but it just happened last Saturday. It was a very nice activity, bringing awareness about the Mezzi violence. And also, I want to congratulate lots of those schools. Their team got recognized because of their work. It's a program that they started from Washington Learn, where they take books to a lunchroom. So while the parents are doing lunchroom, their kids are able to read. So I congratulate them, and that's the way we build community. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilman Anderson? Councilman Egan? Councilman Fleming?
Just briefly, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Just remind people to get tested. It's a little personal for me because in 2004, we lost my sister to breast cancer. She had fought a brilliant fight, but, you know, it resurfaced, and then within three months, she was gone. And just a reminder, just tell people to get tested if you've got relatives, just give them awareness, even if they don't have any symptoms, because sometimes substance doesn't, doesn't show up like that. Just get tested, and encourage people and your families to get tested.
Thank you. Next, I'll open it up to the public for comment only. This is not a question and answer session. Please step forward again, state your name and address. You have five minutes, one time up for comments only.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, again, once again. Now, to show you the situation where you were telling me that with this ordinance with Paul Robinson Boulevard and George, Georgia's Road, last week's discussion, you were saying this was the first time on this reading, due to where, here's the paper, July 6th, due to where, like I said, I know good and well, and you can look at the video that I came up here, and I think Mr. Tom Valentini, Sergeant Obol, on it. So I think due to where, someone needs to get their paperwork corrected to where, like I said, it went through, but I'm having to kill my time with it. I know what I was talking about. My, my thing to talk about tonight, due to where, come on, like I said, with 911, 745, 5200, it needs to go back to New Brunswick Police Headquarters. Too many questions are being asked, what, due to where I witnessed my neighbor dying, what, that was on September, the beginning of September on Oxford Street, due to where it was meant for me to sit on the porch. Wow, the C and N's go, two blocks pass, then turn back around, due to where they went to the wrong location, that's one thing. Then wow, due to where, I will say, thank you, like I said, I know we got good blessed officers. Like I said, 15% out of 100% is not good. I will thank Sergeant Bobadilla and Officer Yasek, due to where I was walking to get me something to eat on Remson Avenue, a woman was having a heart attack. I did not call 911 or 755200. I called 745, 5226, and I talked to Sergeant Bobadilla. He, within four to five minutes, Officer Yasek and the ambulance was there. So like I said, the situation is with Rutgers, and it needs to be investigated, due to where Rutgers and New Brunswick do not share the same radio. You have to ask all these questions that are not even needed, and then the transfer back over to New Brunswick that is taking extremely too long. That's on the 24th. I would thank Officer, excuse me, if I pronounced chatter, chattered, that's 7349, plus the chief of New Brunswick Fire Department. While I was walking, a young lady, she passed out down there on George Street. I appreciate the work, even though some people refuse, you can't be forced to take to the hospital. But I, I thank him with a good heart, where he really kept, kept an eye on her, due to where, what, she kept passing out the ambulance, had to come two times for her, but she still couldn't be taken. I would say, wow, on September 27th, on Saddam Street, a little girl, two, had two seizures. Thank the New Brunswick Fire Chief again, due to where being flagged down, due to where taking the ambulance over 25 minutes to arrive. Then wow, September 30th, due to where the stabbing on Front Street, ambulance taking over 30 minutes. But like I said, it's not just with the ambulance, it's with the police department, too. And I really believe, wow, is Rutgers really protecting, is that to be able to protect Rutgers? Due to where, wow, we only get alerts when something's dealing with Rutgers, never with the shooting or anything. It should have been an alert that was next to a school. So like I said, please, take me seriously, if this is taking this long, wow, Rutgers really is a long way from what it would take to someone out there. And I'm not saying that to be funny, due to where, come on, this is outrageous, and like I said, this is nothing new. It's been going on for what, what, past year and a half. And like I said, come on, get, get back to New Brunswick, if you can afford everything else, please, come, come on. Like I said, it is outrageous to really see someone laying there, just like this hermit Rob, Miss Robinson with the Delafield. Wow, how my son laid there 15, 20 minutes waiting for help. And wow, the officer's got an award? Please, be for real. And like I said, I'm looking at all of you, and like I said, you really better think of it, due to where, wow, it, it's all un-evident. And then my other question where I want to know, is Rutgers responsible only for campus and/or anywhere in New Brunswick? Because I'm being told that Rutgers is state police, they can do whatever they want, and then New Brunswick Police, due to where, what, they're saying they're only on campus? Due to where it was a situation involved with my sister, what, the Rutgers, where, what, New Brunswick, it wasn't, it didn't even go through New Brunswick, it wasn't on campus. And like I said, I thank Sergeant Dalton on that. He said, nothing happened that day until I showed him the video. Said, yes, it did. So like I said, is everything Rutgers is talking to being reported to New Brunswick Police Department? No, it is not. And like I said, it's all on video, due to where, what, young lady, waiting to please go, oh, I got beat up, beat up. Then what, a, a group of black people there, he had an officer black come over here with a taser with my sister and her daughter, and then what else? He said, oh, that wasn't, that wasn't the people who did it. But like I said, did it respond to New Brunswick? That was not Rutgers campus. And like I said, something is very sneaky, due to where it's not going right with Rutgers down there with these calls and reporting everything to New Brunswick, where they have the choice to make a choice whether they respond or New Brunswick. But my question I would like to ask, please tell me, is Rutgers Police only on campus?
Thank you for your comments, I'll have the next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of New Brunswick City Council. My name is Susan, Susan Kramer Mills. I am the Executive Director of Town Clock Community Development Corporation, which is located here in New Brunswick, actually just down the street. We are New Jersey's largest permanent and supportive housing provider for survivors of domestic violence and their children. On behalf of the Town Clock CDC Board of Trustees, I was asked to read this statement to you tonight. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as many of you do know. In light of this, Town Clock CDC's Board of Trustees is asking City Council to consider taking steps to increase transparency for all public officials and those who are running for office. Our hope is the following: If a candidate running for office in New Brunswick has been found by any court to have violated restraints placed on them by a criminal family or civil court to protect against domestic violence, then that outcome should be a matter of public record. And if documented abusers are engaged in political activity, then any paper trail of that abuse should be made public. The official record should be released so people can make an informed decision. We know that privately constructing a law, which we would love to have, and getting it right will take time, but Town Clock CDC's Board of Trustees think that it's time to start the conversation now, this month. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, and we hope you will work with Town Clock CDC to advocate for transparency, to hold abusers accountable for their victims' sake and for the greater community. I have this letter, if you would like to receive it. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, I'll have the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council, my name is Nathan. I came here before, back for a second time, discussing issues of taking a shower down on Bill Street. It's still the same issue that I'm being told by 211 and, you know, other organizations-
I'm sorry, sorry, can you please see?
I said, I'm being told by 211 and other organizations that, you know, Bill Street is a place to go to take showers, and, you know, to this day, I'm, you know, paying $5 to go to Prevent Boy to take a shower, because the YMCA here showers daily, and there's nowhere in New Brunswick that I can take a shower daily, so I'm trying to figure out how I can resolve that situation, that's one. And also, is it possible that I can be reimbursed for the money that I'm paying to go to Prevent Boy just to take a shower? Is it possible that we can work on making it, you know, daily in New Brunswick, and that's possible, you know, for anyone? Another issue is, I'm trying to see, how can I get answers for as connect the services, for as training and employment to One Stop and DVR? Looking to get training, but for some reason, it's barriers, and I'm looking to see, you know, how can I resolve that as well?
It was my understanding that Mr. Jones did reach out to you, he spoke to you after the last meeting, and then, again, I thought he was meeting you at the Dignity Center, but I will follow up with him and ask him to reach out to you again, he's the person who, who has the most knowledge of all of the services that you were asking for.
That meeting did take place.
Excuse me?
Did you speak at the Dignity Center, that meeting did take place?
He, he did?
Yes, I was just saying, that meeting took place.
Okay, good, I'll ask him to reach out to you again, and I'll pass these concerns along to him.
Were the challenges resolved, or you were able to take, because the Dignity Center is supposed to be open, I believe it's open or would be open to allow unhoused residents to take a shower there?
Yes.
Are you taking advantage of it?
There's only two days a week, two days, Fridays, whereas though, at least Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, you give it an extra day. Two, if it's going to skip days, and another thing is, like, the conditions of it. When you take a shower there, you have to go right back out into the winter elements, you know, it's winter now, and that's an issue. So I'm trying to see, where is it that we can go take a shower at least?
I will, I will definitely be-
10, 20 minutes.
I'll reach out, reach out to Mr. Jones this evening, and I'll have him reach out to you. Thank you. Are there any other speakers this evening?
Good evening, once again, Council, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick. I'll start with some positive items, I wanted to give a shout out and thank you to the folks at DPW. We did a mini cleanup as part of the block casting program in my neighborhood, and it was a great success, and thanks in large part to the folks there who provided us with supplies, a special pickup of the litter that we were able to get off the street, so I wanted to thank everybody involved in that. Also, pleased to see eight new bus shelters installed on Livingston Avenue after many months of pushing, and, you know, unfortunately, it seems some of the seats were installed, perhaps not in the right position, so I'm still awaiting some answers on that, and of course, still awaiting the installation of another three shelters that were promised as part of the Livingston Avenue project, but just here to report, and pleased to, pleased to see some progress, those all went in last week, and it was good to see. So I did want to follow up, because I, you know, have asked Mr. Barron about this, I've asked the council about this, and it was not included in your remarks today. What does the city have to say about the allegation that DPW workers were instructed to illegally haul regulated medical waste from Robert Wood Johnson Hospital and illegally dump it in the Middlesex County landfill?
You can continue with your comments, I'm making notes, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay, and, you know, am I ever going to get a response, because I have asked now, it's been a bit over a month?
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to getting that response, I wanted to also update, I know we had asked about Mr. Clark, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, having three additional executive director jobs running three other housing authorities. Well, I was remiss, he actually has a fifth job, he's a consultant for the Boonted Housing Authority, and has been for a couple of years, and he gets a straight $60,000 a year on top of the $200,000 plus that we pay him in New Brunswick, and whatever else he's making at the $125 an hour jobs he's got himself in Princeton and Atlantic City. I would have taken these concerns to the New Brunswick Housing Authority, but their meeting was canceled last week, and so I'm very concerned about him splitting his time five ways. Again, as I pointed out, the Housing Authority is not in good shape, they tore down the senior building, Hoffman Pavilion, and have not delivered on a replacement, it's been over a decade now. The last thing Mr. Clark should be doing is going to get other jobs in other places, and, you know, dividing his time, so I'm concerned about it. I appreciate your remarks at the beginning of the meeting, and I am going to follow up and follow through on that. Also deeply concerned about the financial mismanagement at the JIF. It's, you know, a fine thing to say that, you know, they should have been accounting this, and now we owe it, but, you know, I'm concerned about the future of the JIF, because not, everybody's going to pay it, and it seems like they are going to be finding themselves in more difficulties, and I'm just concerned about New Brunswick taxpayers and why we're hook, line, and sinker along for the ride, sticking with this, this joint insurance fund. I feel frankly it's helped to subsidize the cost of corruption in New Brunswick by paying all the legal bills and all the settlements from corruption cases, police misconduct, and all the other shady things that have gone on over the past 30 years. So I don't think that that's a model we want to stick with and cling to, especially as we can see the house of cards beginning to fall. Finally, I want to talk about public safety, I brought this up before, didn't get a response, September 12th, 12:47 PM, there was a shooting. It was in Joyce Kilmer Park, the target was unharmed, but a bullet, a stray bullet, did penetrate and break somebody's window of their house. An innocent person had a bullet end up in their house, and the city had said that whenever shootings happen in public places, you would disclose it using your social media outlets. That did not happen on that occasion, I've asked before, can you tell me, why isn't the city living up to its word to be transparent about violent crime?
I'll look into that particular incident.
Okay, I'll point out, there was also a murder that same day. A man named Barry James lost his life on Troup Avenue, was stabbed to death at 6:30 in the morning. The Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office did an investigation, they did make an arrest. That also was not shared by the city government through any of its channels, social media, NICSIL, et cetera. I understand the prosecutor's office was the lead agency on the investigation, but they issued a joint statement with the New Brunswick Police Department to the press. And what happens in most other towns, when something that serious happens, is they use their communications channels to share the news of the crime and the arrest, and whatever else there may be, with the public, using NICSIL, using their social media, and New Brunswick does not, and I still can't figure out why, so I'd like you to please get me an answer. Why isn't the city using its communication channels to inform the public of the most serious crime that is-
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Murder, thank you.
Are there any others in the public who would like to speak, and address the council this evening? Seeing none?
What was your proposal, second?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Laver?
Yes.